Botter?
Here.
Councilman Termini?
Here.
Mayor Story?
Here. And I'm going to ask Councilman Termini to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
See, this evening we have a couple of presentations. And the first one is a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Cynthia Finn, Finley, for her service as the City of Capitola's representative on the Community Action Board. So if I could ask Cynthia to come up front. Come up here, Cynthia. Stand here, and then people in the viewing audience will be able to see both of us. You know, the Community Action Board is our local anti-poverty organization here in Santa Cruz County. Every year, they serve over 9,000 individuals who may be in a state of emergency or just are, maybe need assistance in getting themselves out of poverty. And I know, over these past few years, with the Great Recession, tremendous unemployment, that you guys have had a big job over the last few years. So I want to thank you, Cynthia Finn, if I may. Finn has been our representative appointee, so to speak, to the Community Action Board. Every jurisdiction in Santa Cruz County has an appointment to the Community Action Board. And it's, we want to thank you again for serving. I'm going to read your proclamation. This is just City of Capitola, certificate of appreciation to Cynthia Finn, Finley, for service as the city's representative on the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County from January 2013 through May of 2014. And so, here you are, Cynthia. And I don't, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just want to say thanks, Sam and Stephanie and the City of Capitola for giving me this opportunity to serve. And a special thank you to Maria Elena Deglagozza, who is the new executive director. It's been my honor, so thanks.
All right. Next, we have a proclamation honoring Amateur Radio Week. And I wonder, is Sue Ellen Peterson and Bob Weiser in the audience? Thank you, Sue. Sue Ellen, how do you do?
I'm very pleased to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Bob.
Bob, we spoke out front.
Yes.
So I was not aware of this, but June 23rd to June 29th is Amateur Radio Week. And, you know, whereas the Federal Communications Commission licenses all amateur radio operators to provide public and emergency communications, develop and maintain a pool of radio operators and promote domestic and international goodwill. And Santa Cruz County amateur radio operators are known throughout the county, state, and nation for their outstanding dedication and commitment to safety and preparedness. Amateur radio operators in Capitola and Santa Cruz County provide thousands of hours of volunteer support to several agencies, including Cal Fire, County Sheriff's Office, County Police Department, the American Red Cross, the Department of Homeland Security, the National Weather Service, and the Salvation Army. They also provide invaluable assistance during parades, charity bike rides, running, and walking events. Local amateur radio operators work closely with federal, state, city, and county emergency service organizations to provide volunteer communication services during wildfires, severe weather, national disasters, communications, and power outages, accidents, and other emergencies. And the amateur radio community represented by the Santa Cruz County Amateur Radio Club and the Santa Cruz County Amateur Radio Emergency Services has been active supporting the Emergency Operations Center, Cal Fire, the Sheriff's Department, California Highway Patrol, search and rescue, large animal rescue team, groups, and volunteer agencies in their contributions of services to the community. This year, Amateur Radio Relay League Field Day exercises will take place on Saturday, June 28, 2014, at the Watsonville Airport. You guys will have to tell us more about what that is. It sounds intriguing. UC Santa Cruz Campus East Field and the San Lorenzo Valley Amateur Radio Club Field Day Site at the Cal Fire Training Center in Bonneville. Therefore, I, Sam Story, Mayor of Capitola, do hereby proclaim June 23rd, 29th as Amateur Radio Week in Capitola, and call on all residents to support this very important emergency preparedness exercise and recognize the tremendous contributions that Santa Cruz County amateur radio operators have made in our community. And just to acknowledge Sue Ellen Peterson, she is the Public Information Coordinator for the, now, what is ARRL?
That's the American Radio Relay League. It's a national organization, and they coordinate technical matters with us, with the SC.
Speaker, you know, right here. And so, and Sue Ellen is the president of the local Santa Cruz County Amateur Radio Club. And Bob is the, now, this says K6RMW, is that?
That's your call site.
That's your call site, okay. Emergency coordinator for South Santa Cruz County. So this is the number we should call on our radios if?
Well, that's what you would hear.
Oh, here, coming out from the? Well, thank you for being here to receive our appreciation during Amateur Radio Week. Thank you for your volunteer work and really helping to keep us safe in times of emergency. When I know most other forms of communication go down, it's important to have that backup system so that we can stay in touch, stay in communication, and inform one another. And you guys are the major linking that. Is there anything that you would like to add or say?
Yes. I have something for you too, Mayor Story.
What's that?
And what this is, is an invitation to the Field Day Site up at UCSE East Field and at our Cal Fire Site. Additionally, there are a few brochures in here that will tell you more about what we do as a national organization, what we do locally in the community. I know you want to ask Bob about what's going on at Watsonville. I'm going to let you know that. But first of all, I also wanted to let you know that we're not the only two amateur radios in the audience right now. We have John Nann over here. I'm sure that everybody at Capitola knows him because he's had quite a career in doing volunteer work for various agencies of City of Capitola. And Cap Pennell, who is our district emergency coordinator, and he is right on top of making sure that we have emergency and disaster communications. People all train, as does Bob. Now, Bob will tell you something about Watsonville.
All right. Well, yes, you mentioned the fact that there's three different sites in Santa Cruz, up by UCSE, and also up at the top. And one of the sites that we're doing is, we're doing one in Watsonville. Watsonville is actually having its open house at the airport this year. It happens to be on the same day as Field Day. And so, we decided, since we were going to do a Field Day operation, we would, we talked with the airport, and they said, yeah, please set up there. Basically, what they're trying to show is how Watsonville Airport is used as a disaster site for the entire county. And so, one of the first responders that would go to Watsonville Airport in case of a disaster, like the 89 earthquake and stuff, is an amateur radio team to set up communications. And so, we're going to set up there Saturday morning, and we're going to treat it as if it were a disaster. We're going to grab all our stuff and take it out there and set it up and make everything's work, just like a regular disaster. So that's what we'll be doing.
What time will your disaster be?
We are going to start setting up around 8:30.
8:30?
And we'll be done around 5 o'clock. We're just going to do the one day and see what we can do, from scratch.
All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for informing us about the Field Day Relay. And congratulations on Amateur Radio Week. And we certainly appreciate the opportunity to get the word out to everyone. And thanks again for all that you do.
By the way, I want to introduce one, I want to, yeah, I want to introduce one more amateur radio operator, and she's sitting right there. Your own Sue Sneddon is recently renewed her amateur radio license, and she's sat all the way through my technicians licensing class. And you know what? We'd love to see you in the next one.
Well, congratulations, Sue. And certainly unaware of that talent right here and capabilities right here on our city staff. And you may see me, because I'm going to be termed out of the city council, so I'll have some free time on my end. So, thank you so much.
I got my card.
Okay. Yeah.
I think we're already hams, but just a different. Slightly different definition.
Different license. So next, we'll have a report on closed session from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Story, members of the city council. There are two items on closed session this evening. One was a pending litigation item, and that was a meeting that was held concurrently by the city council and by the city council, sitting as the board of directors of the successor agency to the Capitola Redevelopment Agency. That was to discuss and receive a report from legal counsel on the Ray Ellen Leonard versus City of Capitola et al. litigation that is pending in the United States District Court. Counsel received a report and gave direction, but there was no reportable action on that item. Second is a real property negotiations matter involving the New Brighton Middle School Gymnasium. Parties to that negotiation are the City of Capitola and the SoCal Union Elementary School District. The council received a report from the city manager as the designated negotiating party on behalf of the city, and direction was given, but there was no reportable action taken. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next, we have is additional items, and I don't believe we had any additional items at the diocese this evening. So we can move on from that to additions, deletions to the agenda. Does staff have any requested additions or deletions? Any council members, any additions, deletions to the agenda? So the agenda stands as it is published. Next is public comments. This is opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So please come up if you would like to speak. And I'm going to give each person, because it looks like a lot of people standing up. Let's see if we can limit it to two minutes to each person.
Oh, total time.
Okay, I'm getting the three signal, all right. So if I'm going to give it to one, yes, I understand. But we'll limit it to three minutes for each person.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Vicki Melander. I live at 118 Saxon, on the corner of Saxon and El Salto. And I am, of course, concerned about the proposed Monarch Cove expansion. So I have been reading the EIR, just starting with the traffic study, and I've got to say I really admire all of you for having to read these things, because it's not easy, not an easy thing to get through. I feel in reading, in the reading I've done, that it's too generic, does not take into consideration our unique Capitola neighborhoods, and more particularly Depot Hill, with its one-way ingress and egress off the hill. There are many inconsistencies in the timing that I think some other people are going to be addressing, and the comparing of the intersections, as well as the streets, to other areas. There was more emphasis put on the negative impact the traffic would have at the freeway than actually at the intersections near Monarch Cove. I thought that was very interesting, why, you know, they're more concerned with that. The intersection, as you all know, at Escolona-Monterey can be very dangerous with cars speeding up Monterrey. I witnessed this several times a day. It's an accident waiting to happen. In fact, I believe there was a pedestrian accident on Sunday. I drove by there. So adding yet more traffic daily in the guests and guest services to an already problematic intersection is unacceptable. What would happen in an emergency? Were we all trying to get off the hill, or if an emergency vehicle was trying to get there and couldn't because of the traffic? These are things to consider. Also, I didn't see any plan to monitor traffic on the main thoroughfares to the resort, which as I'm reading are El Salto and Escolona. The study speaks hypothetically about trips per day, but how do you actually monitor the numbers of trips or the speed that these people are driving? The proposed expansion is inconsistent with your intentions for the new general plan, which I really, I really like what I've read about it. And those are to minimize impacts to existing neighborhoods, such as noise, pollution, and cut-through traffic, to keep development to scale with minimum input. To quote your goal, LU1, "Goal of general plan is to maintain and enhance Capitola's neighborhood's distinctive identities and unique sense of place." And just in closing, I've been in real estate for over 30 years here in Capitola, and it's incredible to see people come to this area, to fall in love with what we've always fallen in love with, all of us who are here, to see their response to the unique neighborhoods, the desirable place we live in, the quality of life, pedestrian pet, and kid-friendly neighborhoods. And so I ask you, in the interest of development, change, and economic rewards, to not sacrifice what we hold so precious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Story. I'm a reader, and I, a very impressive book I recently read was called The Death and Life of Monterey Bay, which explains how otters were almost extinct in this part of the coast following the sardine industry's excesses in Monterey. It shows how they came back to what we see today. It also explains about the concept of ecosystems, which was developed by Dr. Ricketts, who worked with Joseph Campbell and John Steinbeck and Canary Row, explaining the intertwining of people, animals, and plants with their environment. We are an ecosystem here in Capitola, and on Depot Hill, we have an important part, soon to be extinct if we do not act forcefully. The monarch butterflies that overwinter there, and also partake of the milkweeds that grew in there, are further in danger. The most recent count, done last November, shows that the monarch numbers are increasing. That is, they are recovering. But they are nowhere in the range of the 30,000 that were there in the past. This is important now, because I recently read the draft EIR for the upcoming development, and came to realize that the specialist who did the monarch report was not a monarch specialist, but a beetle specialist and an insect specialist. Perhaps that would account for the comments that was made therein about the new building, saying that it would shelter the butterfly clusters, instead of the trees that they hoped to remove to do the buildings. In the November count, it mentioned that the clusters began 30 feet above the ground. Removal of mature trees and planting young ones will not support butterfly clusters or block off the bay winds. Additionally, I have a report that I'd like to share with you, done by Elizabeth Bell, a monarch specialist, who wrote specifically for Mr. Blodgett's development in Escolona-Gulch in 1997, which did not cite the current, which was not cited in the current draft EIR, something I think might be a suspicious oversight. It's important to note that many of the improvements Dr. Bell recommended in that report, commissioned by Mr. Blodgett in order to develop the site in Escolona-Gulch, were not done. The butterfly population took a huge hit after that development. Notably, the City of Capitola, who it appears is responsible for that overseeing the butterfly sanctuary, has not followed up. Also, the area cited in the draft EIR as being the butterfly sanctuary does not conform to the area specified in the most recent count as where the butterflies actually are. So we have two admirable precedents in this mission. At the butterfly refuge near Moran Lake, there was a plan for pathways and storage near the Load Street sanitation plant. The trees that were to be removed were then not removed, so that they could further shelter the Monarch Cove grove and the butterflies therein. And in the Monarch Butterfly Grove on the, along the Pacific Coast, near Pacific Grove, the extension of a hotel was denied in order to bring back the monarch population from extinction there. It can be done, and we can do it. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dennis.
Remind us all that everyone has the right to come to the diocese at any time and discuss any issue. But I think everybody should be informed that we're going into a public process where this, this type of information will be extremely helpful in the process. And we particularly create a process where the public is involved. And so, this is real premature to what, what we need to do. We also have two council members up here that have to reclusive themselves from that hearing. So you're speaking to not the body that's actually going to hear it. So all I'm saying is, is that you have the right to say what you are, but the right time to be doing this is during the EIR process, where we're allowed, public to participate.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Before you begin, sir, maybe, I wanted to ask the city attorney, Tony, I just, since there are two of us here who are mandatorily recused from voting on that project because of the distance, the 300-feet limitations. Is it permissible for us to be in the room and listen to the public advocacy? And particularly, in my, my position of controlling the meeting?
Yes, in the context of oral communications, where it's not an agenda item before you, and the council is very limited in, in how you may respond to members of the public who are here to speak on something that they're, that is not on your agenda. However, the comments will not be part of the administrative record that will be produced in, in the public review of the environmental document for that project.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Peter Wilk. I'm at 305 Fanmar. I'm here on a different topic. And that is with regards to the planning commission. I sent you all a letter a couple days ago, expressing my concerns about the mystery of the planning commission. And by that, I mean, I guess my, my beef with the planning commission is that, is that applicants go before the planning commission without their expectations having properly been set. And whether you agree or disagree with the planning commission's rulings, you should be able to have an idea of whether or not your project is going to be successful or not. And the reason that's important is that by the time you get before the planning commission, you will have, you've hired an architect, spent a lot of time and money and effort, perhaps over $10,000, just to get the drawings in front. And, and so, I think that's a concern, that it's important that this not be a mystery, but that there are steps taken so that the applicants in a remodel or a design know what's coming. And so, in addition to what I put in the letter, and I won't go over that, another idea popped in my head, and that is something we do in the aerospace industry, which is a series of design reviews, again, to set people's expectations. You have a concept design review, preliminary design view, critical design view. I wouldn't suggest all those, but if, before people spend the time and money to do the fuller plans, perhaps if they came before the planning commission with sketches, some things that maybe the architects would do for free, and say, hey, you know, is this the idea? Is this going to be consistent with what the vision of Capitola is? A perfect example was this last meeting at, was it 401 at Capitola Avenue, where there was a concern that the drawing, drawn by Derek Van Alstine, who was on the, who has been on the Ark and Site Committee, was unacceptable because it didn't have the European feel of the village. Now, I don't know whether or not that's the general consensus, that the village has a European feel, but it would be nice to go with an, with a concept review, that they could say, oh, no, no, this, this is just, this is totally wrong, before they spent the time and the money to fully draw it up. So that's my concern. I'm trying to make the planning commission a more user-friendly process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk.
Good evening, Mayor Story, and members of the council. I'm Darrell Johnson. I'm board president of the seniors' council in Santa Cruz and San Bernardino Counties. And I'm here tonight to publicly express our appreciation to you for unanimously providing $5,000 in funds to the Companion for Life program. I know our executive director, Clay Kemp, sent you an email expressing that appreciation. We wanted to do that publicly also. For this is a program that enables frail seniors, and those especially who live alone, to be able to live independently within their homes, and have the safeguard of knowing that if they need assistance, somebody will be there to respond to their needs. So we wanted to thank you for that, on behalf of the seniors in Capitola, and in reality, all of Santa Cruz County, for, for that funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darrell.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sammy Roy, and I'm here to, on a not-so-serious matter. It's the entertainment permit for our 25th anniversary of our Depot Hill party. And to give you a little history, it was started 25 years ago, when the Navy sent a frigate here in the bay, and Jerry Clark and some neighbors from Depot Hill went out and absconded with half the crew, and brought them back here to Depot Hill and threw a party for them. And I moved here in 1993, after Jerry had had the party for some years, and got involved with Jerry doing the party on El Salto. And for 13 years, we, we applied for our permits every year, and we're always issued our permits, and we always had the party on El Salto, till about seven years ago, when Jerry and I said, this is too much work, and it's too much trouble, and it was a lot of work for us to do it. So for the past six years, we've done it down at Monarch Cove. And I went down there and asked the people there if we could have the party there, and we, they said, yes, they've never charged us any money. We couldn't afford to do it, pay any money anyway. So we've had the party there for the last six years, and we've always had our permits issued with the various police chiefs. And this past year, Chief Rudy issued our permit just a few weeks ago, and then had to rescind it, because some of the neighbors are up in arms about the potential of the development, which has nothing to do with our 4th of July party. It's completely not even relative to that. This has been a family event. This is the 25th year we've done it. And I kind of, I'm like a salmon. I kind of got imprinted with it. After doing it all these years, it's hard to quit. And the one thing I'm able to do is, because I'm a musician, I'm able to get a lot of people to come and play free and donate their time. And so this year, we wanted to have the party at Monarch Cove again, and there's been a lot of opposition to that. And actually, last year, Jerry Clark and I talked about putting it back on the street. And before all this other controversy developed, Monarch Cove said we could use their place again on, this year. So the permit was issued, and then I passed out like I have for 13, 14 years, our same flyers we've had that Jerry wrote years ago. And we just wanted entertainment permit to have music for about five hours on July 4th. There's 8,760 hours in a year, and we're asking for five hours. And there's some discrepancy, I guess, between Monarch Cove's, their, their use permit and our permit. And to be honest with you, Jerry and I, for all these years, we thought we were always just being issued a temporary variance for that day, just for the five or six hours that we have music on July 4th. So now, we've kind of been forced to move the party over next door, where there's no issues about a permit, and, and Chief Rudy said, we'll be getting a permit there. But then we've been told that the neighbors are up in arms, and the minute we start any music, they're in mass, going to flood the police with all types of complaints. And so, these are, then, of course, they would have to shut us down. So I don't know sure what the city council can do, if they could move us back over to, temporarily back over to Monarch Cove. The irony is, if we have the party at 723 El Salto, we will actually put more noise in the neighborhood than if we were on the other side of the fence. And so, back in the tenet area, where we have the bands, we And so back in the tenet area where we have the bands, we actually point all the amplifiers and everything toward New Brighton Beach, which everybody on the beach, of course, loves. And it just makes logical sense. And I'm not sure exactly what to ask for, except that that's our situation with the party. There's going to be plenty of people who want to come to the party. It's kind of unfortunate that some, because of their particular issues, want to block this party for plenty of people who want to come. And it's a family event, and it's always been that way. We've never had a problem. I don't think we've ever had a foul word in the 20 years I've been involved in it. So I'd just like to let you guys know that's our situation there, and it would be unfortunate. The party will still go on, of course, but it would be unfortunate if we don't have music and entertainment. It's almost un-American. It's like not having apple pie. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Can I comment one second, Sam, on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
This has been a regular event at Depot Hill for 25 years. What's changed in the climate up there that's made this so difficult to have, Sam?
Well...
And the process unfortunately was very unfair to you because we're issuing a permit and then taking it back. It seems to me that the impact is much more, if it's on the Dodds' party than it is if it's on El Salto. You have a controlled area and you're facing towards the ocean. I don't quite understand why...
Yeah, that's kind of the irony, Dennis, of doing it there. It doesn't make sense, and we're really careful about how we do the sound and so forth. And from my point of view, you know, I don't have a dog in the fight on all these other issues. I have my opinions, of course, but it's just a Fourth of July party. And there are plenty, plenty of people. I had numerous neighbors. I have the most volunteers we've ever had this year that want to come and help out. And it's just a Fourth of July party for five hours of music. And I just don't see why everybody's in an uproar over it. I mean, well, I think we all need to chill out a little bit and just enjoy the Fourth of July.
All right. Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Yeah. Next. It's Dan.
Hello, everyone. My name's Stan Kettner. I live at 603 Escalona. I wasn't going to talk about Sam's event on the Fourth of July, but seeing that he brought it up, I will. This was a neighborhood block party. And it was for the neighborhoods of Depot Hill and the neighbors in Depot Hill. And Sam has changed that, and he's moved it outside of the neighborhood, and he's bringing people in from outside of the neighborhood. He's posting flyers. I guess it's not Grady's now, but it used to be Grady's. So it's no longer a neighborhood of it. There's also the political nonsense going on at Monarch Cove, and that's what we're all fighting. I know a lot of people up in the neighborhood. I don't know of one person that's going to Sam's party for Fourth of July. I'm sure there will be people that will want to go. And I can't go. I have to work every Fourth of July. I donated a bounce house for five or six years for the party, and I won't be doing that this year because I can't be okay with what's going on at Monarch Cove and support anything that goes on there. So what I'd like to address is Monarch Cove's conditional use permit. And it's been expired for quite some time. It was a three-year permit, and that was issued in 2001. And it has not been revised or reissued or anything. And there's 15 points and provisions of that permit that some of you on the council put into place. Some of you weren't here for that. But I found at least 10 of those items that have been violated just by reviewing it for half an hour. One of those being that they're supposed to post up the events 30 days before on the gates of the property. Well, they never do that. It's not posted there. It's nowhere visible on the property where we can see it. The other is they're limited to 75 guests for an event. I was told today by the wedding planner that we can have up to 150 guests on the property for an event. On the provisions, it also says that they must end by 6 o'clock. And she told me that if we were to have an event and rent the whole place out, that they'd let that go. It wouldn't be a big deal. Okay? Other things that they're not doing is amplified music. Provision six and seven of that permit say, no DJs, no PAs, no amplified music, acoustic music only. I asked her, and she said, oh, yeah, we have a great DJ. His name's so-and-so and so-and-so, and here's his phone number. In their own literature, it recommends anything up to 99 to 100 guests off of their website. So I don't know what's going on here. Who's supposed to be regulating this? Is it the police? Or is it the staff at the city? It seems to be people are pointing fingers this way, and no one seems to be doing anything about it. So with this conditional provision, our conditional use permit, it looks like the Blodgets and Monarch Cove are in violation of it constantly. And I'd really like you guys to reconsider their provisional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Hi. My name's Don Moshe. I live on Central Avenue on Depot Hill. I'm talking about the Monarch Cove EIR. I understand what just went on a few minutes ago about the comments, and I'm going to just speak my piece anyway. I think part of why we're raising this is, a lot of us feel that there are significant problems with the EIR and think that it should be voided and a new one produced. So part of our thing is that we don't think it should keep going, that we need to look at it more closely. I specifically wanted to talk about the traffic aspect of it. I sent the city councils a couple notes last week where I walked through some of the numbers, which are kind of hard to find. I mean, they make a lot of statements and conclusions, which they say in the report are based on the traffic counts that they've made. So I went through trying to tie the numbers they use to the traffic, the vehicle count data in the appendix. And I was able to get to it eventually, but it's not easy to come by. A couple of points I would like to make about it. The report shifts the focus from Depot Hill to, as some other people mentioned this, to other parts of the town. I think you need to remember that all the traffic from this project is going on to Depot Hill. There may be freeway issues, there may be hill and bay issues, but that's tangential. I mean, if they should be addressed, fine, but I think you really need to focus on the impact on Depot Hill. Another aspect is that all that traffic right now has to come up Escalona. If you look at their measurements, they never measured that entrance specifically. They measured it on Central, they measured it on Escalona past Central, so they never totaled that. So they built these estimates based on what I consider faulty measurements. Right now, time? Another thing is, they say that junior guards was covered. Well, it wasn't, not adequately. Only one day did they measure junior guards, or one three-day period. It was on the four measurement sites that were farthest from the Escalona entrance. And they measured it at the end of second session, which is, most of you probably know, is more likely attended. Real quickly, I saw no evidence that their measurements covered any of the conditional use permit events that they talk about. So, you know, none of that's ever taken into account as far as I can tell, and I'll just stop there since I'm out of time.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Dan, could I just remind folks? Be sure and turn your comments in in writing so they'll be addressed during the EIR process and all of your comments addressed.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lester Loops. I live at Grand in Oakland, and I'm here concerned the Monarch Hill development. And specifically, the traffic part of that. And my conclusion, after looking at the traffic analysis, is that the traffic analysis does not describe the impact that needs, and as a consequence, needs to be redone. The traffic analysis is done by Hexagon Transportation Consultants. They're a professional organization and have done this before. But having worked in this area as a consultant, I know that you're given a budget and you produce a report that makes your client happy, which they've done. The developer is claiming, and this is an article from Capitola Life, he's claiming some extraordinary economic benefits to the community. I'm quoting this from memory, since I don't have the article, but he said there'd be $111 million of business income over 10 years. That's 11 million a year. That's $30,000 a day, roughly. That's $735 a day of expenditures in restaurants and buildings per room per day. That is probably an unrealistic economic benefit. And I bring that up because the traffic is done by trip generation counts at the gate of, the traffic increase is estimated by trip generation counts at the gate of Monarch Cove over three days, a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. There was no wedding event on that weekend, as near as we can tell. There was no consideration of occupancy. What we're looking at, transient occupancy tax records, and as near as we can tell, the occupancy at Depot Hill is very, very low. And so, you know, maybe it's, on average, a half of the rooms are rented or a third of the rooms are rented. So if the developer is claiming that you'll get economic benefit because of huge amounts, because of high occupancy rates, and also claiming that there will be very little traffic impact because of low occupancy rates, we find that inconsistent. It is not conclusive, but likely, if you adjust for event and occupancy, that the trip generation counts will have to be multiplied by a factor of somewhere between 2 and 4. That's a guess on my part. In evaluating traffic input, traffic impact, they use a concept called level of service. And that's a definition from the California Highway Capacity Manual. The report states that the increase in traffic will result in a level of service C. And they say that's acceptable because it's acceptable in residential areas in other places, Santa Cruz, San Jose, Phoenix, Arizona. The true impact, which really isn't covered by the environmental impact report...
Please wrap up, Lester.
Huh?
Please wrap up. You're almost a minute over.
Really? You went very fast. Okay.
Yes, I know. It does go faster.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. The result is that we'll go from Level A, which is good, to Level C. If you put in the multipliers, it may go to Level D, which is well past what is acceptable by the plan. So I thank you. I'm sorry, I ran over.
No, that's good.
I will send a letter that goes into these in much more detail.
That's good. Somebody else step on up while Lester's signing in.
Good evening. My name's Tracy Armanino, and I live at 706 Escalona Drive. And I'm going to speak from my heart. I don't have a lot of numbers in front of me. And Dennis, I appreciate that you think this is premature to address the Monarch Cove development, and I don't. I think we need to start screaming loudly and clearly in our opposition to this proposal. Personally, my husband and I moved here in 1999. We left our professions in the Bay Area, and we came here to live our final years. And the thought of a big hotel, and in my mind, it's going to be a big hotel because it's so much bigger than what's there, is unacceptable to me. I know I don't have a vote, but I have a voice. And I don't want all the traffic going up and down Escalona Drive and El Salto Drive. And what I really dread is the dirt being pulled out of the land over there. I don't know how many pounds of dirt will have to be removed before they build this silly garage. I know I'm being opinionated, but I speak for a lot of our neighbors. We really don't want this to happen. And our voices will be heard again, I guess, at the next meeting. But I can't be silent about this. I'm very much opposed to it. Oh, I have another minute and a half?
You do? You're not required to take it.
I'm done.
Well played. I like that. Does anyone else who would like to address the council this evening on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone up front. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening to speak to us. Next, we'll move on to city council, city treasurer, staff comments. I'll ask if there are any staff comments at this time.
I do have one, Mayor Storey. Just wanted to announce that Santa Cruz County Elections Department will be conducting the candidate information night here in the council chambers on Monday, June 30th at 6:00 PM. And they're going to be answering questions and reviewing like how and when to file papers, what qualifications are required, how to prepare candidate statements, and how to raise money for campaigns is a few items. So if anyone's interested, call the city clerk's office here at City Hall and they can give them more information. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sue. Any other staff comments? City treasurer?
Next meeting, we'll be meeting in regards to city treasurer position appointed versus elected. And we will come back and I will report the recommendation from the Finance Committee.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie?
Well, I was wondering about the July 4th issue. I didn't know whether we should add it to the meeting or not. I ran into one of the other neighbors the other day, and they brought it up and said they weren't going because of some other reasons. But I don't know what's going on up there, but I don't want them to have a party and start playing music and then have the police have to go up there when it could be avoided. So I think we need to hopefully get it straightened up ahead of time because it's going to be busy enough for the police department on that day with out-of-towners, without having to deal with anything in our own town that is, you know, could be avoided. So I don't know whether the chief wants to talk about it now, whether you have a plan about this, or you've decided, you know, what are the neighbors going to do? I mean, they can get together, but I know that the, El Salto has a, the Monarch Cove has a no-live music permit for weddings. And I'm not sure what, and I really haven't gone in the past couple of years, so I don't know what's going on. But anyway, I just wanted to head off any, say what the plan is, so we can head off any problems so that we don't have people mad at each other.
Well, I mean, what if we asked the chief and Jamie, city manager, to maybe talk to Sammy, talk to some of the other folks up on Depot Hill, and see if we can work out a mutually agreeable arrangement just for that one day? And so that, because, yeah, it would be a shame if another important issue, I mean, kind of got in the way of the neighborhood and the Fourth of July celebrations. So maybe just ask the staff to see if they could facilitate and come to some understandings and compromises before the Fourth...
Maybe not five hours, maybe four, you know?
We're happy to give it a shot.
We're happy to give it a shot. Frankly, given the language of the CUP, it became clear to us that issuing a permit for live music was really probably not possible. That being said, we are able to issue a permit for amplified noise. We issue them all the time for folks that are going to have a party, and they have applied, folks have applied on that other property to do so, and we can and will issue a permit as we would for any other application that we would receive. So we do intend to do that.
Okay. Mike?
I just have a question of the chief, and it has to do with something that Sam said, and that is, if they have their usual, and, you know, very much traditional Depot Hill block party in the street, and they receive a permit for it, regardless of the number of calls that are received by people who don't necessarily like the block party, they have a permit to do it, so it wouldn't be something that the police would have to take action on, would it?
As we do with all of our permits, sound amplification permits, or minor events such as a block party of that nature, we do condition it as such to try and minimize the impacts to the neighborhood and to the police department. And part of that condition is that we would, we have the capability of suspending or revoking that permit if there was a problem. And we do that to all of our permits in the event that we need to, if something were to get awry.
It's just disappointing that, out of frustration for a process that we have no way of controlling, which is the Depot Hill-Monarch Cove project, which is going through, it's grinding its wheels slowly, that it should cause a backlash or something that's been, you know, again, a tradition in our city for a long time. But then again, I don't live there, so I have to listen to both sides.
The review is separate of the other matter. All the permits that I, that our office issues, citywide, has those standard conditions that we utilize to keep an eye on parking issues, neighborhood concerns, trash, any alcohol related to a particular event at a residence. And so that is a standard condition that we put in all of our sound amplification permits to try and minimize those issues.
It's no surprise that, you know, for 24 years, it's been either tolerated or celebrated, and now it's become unacceptable completely, and it's no coincidence that's because of the project that's going on there. So I don't know what to say.
Well, yes, Ed.
Quick question for the chief. Is there a specific criteria for when you revoke a permit?
No, and other conditions indicate that it may. Again, we, at any location, not specific to the one that we're discussing, is, we evaluate it. When we get there, we try and mitigate the problems. We will contact the applicant or the responsible party at the location where it is, let them know that we've had a complaint, depending on how many or what the complaint is. We try to mitigate it. If it's obvious, it's a problem that has reached serious concern, then we would shut it down the first time. And we've done that before, in past years, at other locations.
So it's a judgment call on who responds, whether there's an actual problem? It's not determined by the amount of calls?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Seeing none, yeah, Dennis?
I'm going to ask for some words of wisdom from our chief on what is legal and what is not legal with fireworks in Capitola. Thank you.
If it goes up or explodes, then it's not something that is legal. And typically, you know, on private property, any of those safe and sane fireworks are acceptable. But again, using good discretion, good common sense, in that how close to a building, that sort of thing, and with kids, and close to neighborhoods, I mean, we have to use good judgment when we use those.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. Any other council comments on any other items?
Yes.
And, yes, Mike?
Just general comments?
Yes.
Good. I love it. This Sunday, Capitola Mall, the Capitola Antique Motorcycle Show, please come down and see us. Summer concert series is going well last night. We must have had 2,000 people out there having a great time. No issues, no police action. It's as good and as family rated as you can get. We are also pleased to hear the Electrical, the Electric Vehicle Alliance has moved their electric vehicle demonstration to Capitola, as opposed to the parking lot at Staff of Life, which they've outgrown. They're talking to the Capitola Mall right now to have their EV demonstrations, and the latest cars that are on the market, and how you charge, and where you charge, and all of that will happen sometime in October at the Capitola Mall. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Any other council comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move on in the agenda then, which will bring us to board's commissions and committee appointments. The first item is to consider an appointment to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, and the requested action for the council is to confirm an appointment. Is there a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Story. This is for an appointment to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz, and as you know, Cynthia Finley resigned effective June 1st. And you also know the mission of the Community Action Board is to advocate for coordinate and administer community programs to combat poverty and the cause of poverty in Santa Cruz County. And in reviewing the bylaws, it states that five of its directors shall be currently elected public officials, or their representatives appointed by City of Santa Cruz, City of Watsonville, and City of Capitola, and two members appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So prior to the close of the application period, we received one application from Jacques Bertrand, and after the close of the application period, we received an application from Kristen Peterson. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any questions on the report from council members? Seeing none, I'm going to, is there a member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone, bring it up to council for discussion and possible action. Anyone?
I would like to move Kristen Peterson to be our cab representative.
Second, I had lunch with her today, and she's young and energetic, and brings some, she's local. She is Herb Ross's granddaughter.
Really?
And, yeah, so it'd be wonderful, a little bit of Capitola legacy to continue here.
Yeah. So we have a motion of second to appoint Kristen Peterson to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz as Capitola's representative. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. And I want to, Jacques, I want to thank you for your interest and your application. There were two, I think, very two highly qualified applicants, but of course, we can only select one. So thank you. With that, we'll go on now to consider an appointment of an alternate representative to the Santa Cruz County Library Joint Powers Board. The requested action is to confirm the, an appointment. Is there a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, as you're aware, the city has appointed Michael Terminy to be its representative. I'm with the Library Joint Powers Board, which provides library services countywide, as well as the Library Financing Authority, which provides the money to provide library services countywide. According to our records, it appears that the mayor, Sam Story, was appointed as the alternate for the Library Financing Authority, but we don't seem to have records that an alternate was appointed to the Library Service JPA. This next month, we anticipate a couple of important topics are going to be discussed by the JPA, and we thought it best to have Capitola representatives attending those meetings. So this item before you is to simply appoint an appropriate alternate to Michael, to the Library Service JPA Board.
Thank you. Other questions on the staff report? Is there a member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. Council, yes, Dennis?
I'd like to volunteer my services on this one. Mike and I do a lot of communications on the library issues. I serve as the other member on the Library Committee for the city, and I would like to sit in this position, and it works-
Is that a motion to?
I don't think I can make my own motion. I just wanted to-
I will make that motion, and my rationale, in addition to what Councilman Norton has stated, is that the preponderance of issues for this next meeting that I'm going to miss is regarding library construction. And since Dennis sits on the ad hoc committee for the Capitola library construction, it would be the correct choice to have him be my alternate for this meeting that I'm going to miss in July. So that is a motion.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion of second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Dennis.
Thank you.
Lot of interesting issues at the library these days.
If Mike and I can exercise some trash can diplomacy with this.
Describes the library JPV meetings slightly, but that's okay.
Which will bring us to the consent calendar. We have just two items on the consent calendar this evening. These, both these items will be handled with one vote, unless any item is pulled by a member of the public or a council member. Does a member of the public wish to pull a consent item? Seeing none, council members?
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
So motion in the second. Dennis?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to the public hearings for this evening. The first is Item 10A, which is a considered resolution adopting the city's general plan update, and a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report, adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and statement of overriding considerations. And the recommendation by staff to council is to adopt those two resolutions. So we'll begin with a staff report, please. Hi, Rich.
Good evening, Mayor Story, council members. On May 8th, 2014, your city council did consider the general plan update, and continued the hearing with staff direction to prepare a revised draft general plan document, address quality of life principles, provide additional floor area ratio information, and then lastly, to invite some planning commission and general plan advisory committee members to testify tonight's hearing. So staff did prepare a revised draft general plan update, and distributed those documents to the council. They were provided in three-ring binders, and printed in black and white, and shown in a track changes format to make it a little bit easier to identify the revisions that were made since the last draft. We did incorporate the comments that we received from the GPAC, the Planning Commission, the city council, as well as the public in that draft. The final general plan following adoption will be printed in full color and be a comb bound copy, kind of like the previous drafts that you've seen. So the one you have today is just for ease of use. At the last meeting, we had a pretty extensive discussion regarding floor area ratio, and after which we had commentary from a member of the public that the general plan should really focus more on quality of life principles rather than floor area ratio. And he was exactly right. I think we probably got caught into the weeds a little bit, and it overshadowed some of the real principles of the general plan that reflect quality of life. So I thought it was worthwhile to go through just a few slides to discuss some of the general plan's quality of life principles that you would be adopting. In the land you settlement, some quality of life principles that we have is to protect and enhance the special character of our residential neighborhoods, to preserve the historic and cultural resources within the city, to provide high-quality public parts that cater to the diverse needs and interests of Capitola residents and visitors, and to support recreational programs and community events that contribute to a high quality of life. In the open space and conservation element, the general plan promotes sustainability as a foundation of Capitola's way of life, promotes increased use of renewable energy sources and alternative fuels, protecting natural habitats and biological resources, and promotes increased water conservation. The mobility element contains quality of life themes such as providing a roadway system that enhances mobility, protects residential neighborhoods, and promotes a high quality of life, provides for a well-designed parking as part of a balanced transportation system, providing a complete network of bikeways and bicycle facilities, and providing high-quality pedestrian facilities to support walking and the enjoyment of the outdoors in Capitola. In the safety and noise element, we discuss minimizing the loss of life, injury, and property damage due to natural disasters, maintaining effective emergency response procedures to ensure public safety, maintaining a safe environment in Capitola through law enforcement, and minimizing the community's exposure to excessive noise. Finally, the economic development element sets forth goals to provide businesses and jobs that create a healthy and stable local economy, expanding and promoting environmentally sustainable jobs and businesses in Capitola, encouraging stores, services, and unique community character that serve both residents and visitors, and maintaining and encouraging Capitola's base of small-scale and locally-owned businesses. So with that, we'll get back into the floor area ratio discussion. As you recall, state law does require all agencies in California to adopt maximum development standards for residential, commercial, industrial, mixed-use designations. Floor area ratio is a typical way that's accomplished for commercial and mixed-use areas, and unlike the zoning ordinance, which does allow a variance process, there are no variance provisions to deviate from floor area ratio requirements in the general plan. So there were three basic issues that we discussed at the last hearing regarding floor area ratios. The first was to establish a baseline floor area ratio that's appropriate for the city. As you recall, the 1989 general plan established a .5 floor area ratio limit citywide, with the exception of the Village, which has no maximum floor area ratio limit. The second issue is whether or not to include a provision for increased floor area ratio allowance in the general plan. The increased floor area ratio allowance was a means to provide an opportunity for beneficial projects in limited areas of the city to have an opportunity to have increased intensity without giving a high baseline floor area ratio citywide. We did require that any request for increased floor area ratio be approved by the city council with findings that the project would provide substantial community benefit, enhance economic vitality, and minimize impacts to neighboring properties. The following issue, or the last issue, was where the increased floor area ratio provision apply if it were adopted. In the proposed plan, it would apply only into the Village and 41st Avenue corridor. In the Village, only hotels would qualify, and on 41st Avenue, it would only apply to the west side of the corridor. So at the last meeting, we also discussed possibly trying to find some example hotels that were in urban areas, kind of medium size, and had a range of two to three floor area ratios. And to my surprise, that exercise was a little bit more difficult than I anticipated. There's not a lot of hotels that are of that scale in urban areas. What we typically find is you have your large suburban hotels, like the Best Western or Fairfield that we have on 41st, or in more dense urban areas, you have large hotels, usually 10, 12, or even more stories, like you'd find in San Francisco or LA. That said, we did find a few hotels that are somewhat representative that we'll go through and show you. I would say to keep in mind that the design of these hotels is not necessarily reflect what we had seen in the Village. This is just a demonstration of floor area ratio. So the first one is the Intercontinental Clement. This is on Cannery Row in Monterey. It's a four-story structure, built pretty much right up to the setbacks, and from a viewer at the street, it really has an appearance of having a floor area ratio of approximately four. When you look a little bit closer at the site, it is reflective of what you see at the street. There is a small interior courtyard that you can see in the top image, near the coast, which reduces the floor area ratio. We would estimate it to be about 3.7. Again, it has minimal setbacks, and generally, in that neighborhood, fits pretty well with the character of Cannery Row. The next example we found was the Hotel Healdsburg. This is a relatively new hotel, right in the center of town in Healdsburg, three-story structure. And from a viewer on the street, it looks like it probably has a floor area ratio just under three. It does have some setbacks in articulation that would reduce from just a straight 3.0 floor area ratio. However, with this project, if you take a closer examination, you see it's on a very large site, and in the rear of the property, it has expansive courtyards, landscaping, gardens, a swimming pool, which reduce the overall floor area ratio to about 1.5.
Is there parking in the back there?
The parking lot in back's a municipal lot. It's not part of that actual property.
Where do they park?
I believe they park in that municipal lot behind the property.
You're kidding?
That's my understanding.
I was going to say, there must be, where's the two-story, three-story underground parking there?
No underground parking at this hotel.
Well, we'll have to go check it out.
Yeah. Then the last example we found was the La Casa del Camino. This hotel's in Laguna Beach. It's a two-to-three-story structure, and from standing at the street level, it really looks like it has a floor area ratio of about two. You do notice that it's got a projection a little bit towards the middle of the building, which would bring that floor area ratio slightly up. Actually, this one, though, if you look at it closer, it actually has a floor area ratio- Actually, this one, though, if you look at it closer, it actually has a floor area ratio of about 2.7, a little bit closer to 3, because the design steps back towards the rear of the property where it's three stories. And if you can see on that aerial, it's built from property line to property line. There's no courtyards or interior open spaces that would reduce that floor area ratio. So the former Village Theater site, this is a 30,000-square-foot site, as you all know. We do have general plan design standards that are in the proposed plan. Among those is the height of any future hotel there would have to be built below the buff line, that it would need to respect the scale and character of neighboring structures, that it would encourage a pedestrian-oriented design, and have remote parking to reduce traffic and parking impacts in the Village. And put all that together, what you'd really end up with is some kind of step-back design where you'd have maybe 2, 2.5, 3 stories at the street, and then probably going up and being where the mass is focused more towards the back of the property and concealed from the public view. So we also heard throughout the process with the general plan advisory committee, the planning commission, and then that city council meeting, sort of this relationship or lack thereof between floor area ratio and scale. So this is kind of a variation of the previous illustration we showed with floor area ratio, where a one-story structure with a 1.0 floor area ratio could occupy an entire lot, or alternatively, it could be two stories on 50% or four stories on 25% of the lot. Floor area ratio does not establish a building envelope. That's done through the zoning ordinance, through development standards like height, setbacks, stories, and lot coverage. So what you're really looking at is, it's a maximum building intensity, but it does not define or limit necessarily the scale or appearance of a building. An example that we've talked about at the joint planning commission city council meeting was we heard that there was concerns, well, we don't want more buildings like the condos on Park Avenue. They're four stories, it's in a highly visible corridor through the city, and all the building mass is fronted towards the street, right in the viewer's view shed. But when you take a closer look, the floor area ratio of these buildings is not particularly high. It ranges probably between 1.3 and 1.5, again, because it's on a large lot and it shares the site with parking and interior courtyard. And really, I think what we're looking at here is more a product of form, placement, and design than a high floor area ratio or building intensity. Similarly, floor area ratio really has no correlation to design. These are four houses that are of similar size and scale, but they're very different. I think most of us would look at the two houses on the left and think they're a little bland for Capitola, although maybe you appreciate the minimalism. But the ones on the right probably capture the theme and design that we would want to promote in our city. Nonetheless, the floor area ratios probably don't differ that greatly between these four So circling back to the issues that we highlighted earlier, the first two is to establish the baseline floor area ratios, and then whether or not to allow the increased floor area ratio provision. The planning commission did spend considerable time deliberating these issues. They did recommend keeping a provision for increased floor area ratio allowance, and the numbers shown in this table are the recommended floor area ratio limits recommended by the planning commission. The one area that staff would recommend the city council consider a little bit more closely is the 1.5 floor area ratio in the Community Commercial District on 41st, which is south of Capitola Road. As you know, that's also the location where we have the Best Western, the Fairfield, and both those hotels have floor area ratios of about 2. The property owner in between those two hotels has indicated he may have planned someday in the future to develop a hotel. We think it would be fair to at least allow an opportunity to pursue a similar-scale project in that area. The third question was where should the increased floor area ratio provision apply? This is another area where I would recommend that the city council look at a little bit more closely. The proposed plan would only allow it on the west side of 41st Avenue. This slide that we showed, I believe, at the last hearing, I think demonstrates that the parking lots on the east side are also expansive enough that you could theoretically have some higher floor area ratio project which fronts 41st Avenue but is still set back far enough from adjoining residential uses to minimize any land use conflicts. So kind of to summarize the general plan update that's before you this evening, there's a number of benefits with the plan that I think we should highlight briefly. It is a modern plan. It meets current legal standards. I think we'd have greatly improved usability with the document from our current plan. The proposed plan places greater residential neighborhood protections, and it also has an emphasis on sustainability for alternative transportation modes, compact development, green jobs, and greenhouse gas reduction measures. There's provisions for energy and water conservation, more protections for historic and cultural resource preservation, maintenance and enhancement of parks, our beaches, and open spaces. And then, of course, finally, this document would establish appropriate floor area ratio So the general plan advisory committee in November provided unanimous endorsement of the proposed general plan update. In April, the planning commission considered the document and also gave a unanimous recommendation that the city council certify the final EIR, adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program, and statement of overriding considerations, and adopt the city's general plan update. Staff concurs with the planning commission recommendation. That would conclude my presentation, and I do have David Early here from Placeworks who will offer a few concluding remarks on the general plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rich. Are there questions for Rich?
I have one.
Yes, Dennis?
On the central Village mixed-use, when we're speaking here, increased FAR of 3.0, is that only applying to the theater property, or are you talking about the whole Village?
The way the plan is currently drafted, it would apply to any hotel in the Village.
Any hotel in the Village. The rest of it is proposed that stays at?
It would be a 2.
Would be no floor area ratio.
Today, there's no floor area ratio. We're legally required to set some limits, so the proposed plan would set a baseline floor area ratio of 2.
What is the Village at now? What is the Village at now, on an average?
You know, I think really, if you go down there and look at the buildings, if it's two stories, it's about 2, give or take a couple decimal points. If it's one story, you're looking at about point, at 1, give or take.
Okay. So one more question. In tying this to how we look at structures, for instance, decks, mezzanines, those type of things count as floor area. If you did a project at the Capitola Theater site, and you did a two-story structure with an open mezzanine in between, all of that would be counted as floor area ratio?
You're right. The zoning ordinance describes how floor area ratio is calculated. Certainly going to be an issue that we're going to want to review with the zoning ordinance update and look at that carefully. We also count basements. I'm not sure if that's what we want to do. So there's a number of issues with how that number's calculated that I think, you know, within the coming months, we're going to get a little bit deeper into and try to refine those numbers.
So we shouldn't concern ourselves with that issue now?
I don't think so, because the general, I mean, we could add an action item in the general plan to refine the zoning ordinance, but we intend to do that anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Rich.
Other questions on the Rich's report? Rich, I did have a question about the staff suggested increase on community commercial to 2.0, and that's to bring it in line with the Fairfield and Best Western hotels. And those are currently at 2.0. But I'm seeing here that our previous general plan had a maximum of .5 in community commercial, and actually throughout the city, .5. How did that happen, that we ended up with two hotels at 2.0 if the maximum previously was .5?
Well, that's an interesting question. I mean, I have theories, obviously, a lot of us weren't here, but, you know, the requirement was written in small text beneath the cap. It was a caption of an image in real small text, very easy to miss. So it may have been that nobody realized it was there. It may have been that somebody at some point looked at it, so that's just not reasonable. I really don't know.
Okay. I mean, I was here for one of them, and I don't know how that happened, but from general plan standpoint, that was a mistake.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah, Mike?
What is the floor area ratio of the approved senior housing that we approved and has yet to be built?
I apologize. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. I'm going to guess it was under 2, just from my memory, because of the setbacks mostly.
But do keep in mind that FAR is traditionally used to measure commercial development and residential development is usually controlled by units per acre.
For a CUP, or for a planning or development. Right, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Yes, David?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm David Early with what we call now called Placeworks, as I think you all know, formerly the Planning Center DCNE. I think you all know Ben Noble from my office, who's been your principal in charge and project manager for this project. I just wanted to make a few comments, starting with the very much thank you for the opportunity to work with the City of Capitola on this general plan update. It's been really a pleasure for Ben and for me to be able to work with you, your community, the G-PAC, the planning commission, such an engaged community, a community that clearly really cares about the quality of life here in the city, and it's really been a pleasure to be able to work with you. I'm sorry I missed your last meeting. I was actually the sickest I've been in about seven years, lying in bed at home that night, and I really regretted not getting to be here. I was in attendance at the planning commission discussion, and I was very impressed by the quality and depth of the planning commission discussion, and I think you, moving forward and looking at this general plan that has been reviewed in a lot of detail and crafted by the G-PAC, then reviewed very carefully by the planning commission, you really are in good hands moving forward to this, with this. It's a general plan that I think does, as Rich said very eloquently, it reflects the unique character and the quality of life that residents here in Capitola value so much. It's a very modern plan with all the characteristics that Rich described towards the end of his presentation, that's really going to put Capitola at the forefront of thinking about sustainability and responsible design, conservation, as well as development, in a very responsible and progressive way. And I was interested to note, Ben and I, as we were sitting in the audience before we got started, it was interesting to note that it was already quoted to you tonight in your public comment even before you've adopted it, and I think that's a sign that we have in certain ways, you really have hit the nail on the head in putting this plan together. You do have before you a revised draft. We are very glad to have been able to make that available to you so that you can really see exactly where the changes have been made by the general plan committee and the planning commission. I think that will help you to really understand exactly what you're adopting. I think you know that we did also prepare a very extensive matrix of all the comments presented and responses to them, so that we've really been sure that we've been able to respond to every comment that was given to us. And so we feel very good about the overall responsiveness of this document. I know that there were some questions last time about the difference between the general plan and the EIR on it. I just want to take a couple minutes to clarify that. You do also have the EIR in front of you. That is a required disclosure document that the state of California requires that we write and that you certify before you can take action on the general plan. But once you've certified that EIR, it's not the plan itself. The plan is the plan document that has all the policies and actions in it. The EIR is the document that discloses what the impacts would be, mitigates those impacts, makes necessary findings of overriding consideration, and that you then certify as a precondition for acting. You must certify the EIR before you can either accept or actually deny this plan. You have to first certify the EIR, but then it just goes into the record, and the EIR, and the general plan is the document at that point with the guiding policies and actions. I talked already about the fact that it is, I think, a great plan and what you've put together in terms of reflecting the quality of life. I do want to take a few minutes just on this kind of niggling issue about the FARs, because I know it does get really down in the weeds, and as a planner, I apologize that we have to put you through that. But as Rich pointed out, state law does require that every land use designation have either dwelling units per acre for residential, or, I mean, there are other ways to do it, but you have to have some density measure for every non-residential category. And your general plan doesn't actually do that today. We're closing a little hole in the plan by making sure that we have those FAR designations for every use. And I just want to make sure that you understand that we, as your consultants, believe very strongly that the careful consideration that this has received at the G-PAC and the planning commission has now led to a pretty good set of requirements that I think are reflective of what's on the ground. They give the flexibility to continue to do what Capitola has already done, but, at which, as Rich pointed out, are not the same as design guidelines. So adopting an FAR of a certain size doesn't mean you're going to get a building that looks a certain way. You still are going to have design regulation and design guidance to make sure that you really get the high-quality building. And all you're talking about here is the total amount of development in numbers that can occur on the site, very different from the design themselves. But we do think, based on all the work that Rich showed you, that these FAR numbers are very appropriate considering the type of development that already exists as a precedent here within the city. We do concur with staff's recommendations regarding the two changes to go to the one, from 1.5 to 2.0 south of, on the southern part of 41st Avenue, and also expanding that to the east side because of the buffer areas that are there with the parking lots. So with that, I do want to close and just say we're very excited to pursue the rest of our contract with you, our already existing contract, which allows us to assist staff as you put together your revisions to the zoning code and local coastal program. That's going to be a very important part of this, too, and it's really implementation, as you've already asked some questions about tonight, and we can begin that important work just as soon as we move through this next phase. So I hope that between Rich and Ben and I, we can answer any questions you may have and be able to move you towards an ability to adopt this and move it forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. Other questions for David? Seeing none? Yeah, Dennis?
I have a question. Maybe David or Ben could follow up on this. The issue came up in the last meeting about the quality of life issue. And is there really a measurement that can be used in the planning process in actually making determination on a project as to quality of life? And we do it with economic impact. Is there a measurement that can be used in planning to actually give direction to, or a recommendation or direction to a project as to how it fits as to quality of life?
And I think, if I, I just want to clarify, you're asking this question really sort of outside the scope of the general plan, but for general knowledge.
But I am, but I think it could refer back to the general plan, meaning that we could make a statement that the quality of life should be measured for every project that comes into the project.
Well, we haven't put one in here, and honestly, I don't think there is any good measure that, especially tonight here at the last minute, where I would feel comfortable with you inserting that into the general plan that's been worked on so hard. There are several measures that are available, and you might look at in a future study to see if you want to add it as a policy at some point. Our own company has a proprietary analysis tool called Green Score, in which we evaluate quality of life from a variety of perspectives. The Congress for a New Urbanism and Green Building Council have put together, through the LEED certification process, they have a LEED certification for developments that allows what really is looking at sort of the sustainability, and many of those are quality of life indicators of a development. There is something called Walk Score that you may be familiar with that looks at walkability of a development, and that is certainly one very important aspect of quality of life. There are a number of measurement systems like that that have been developed, both by ourselves and by others in the planning profession. And I would be hesitant to put a, because they are somewhat subjective systems, I'd be hesitant to say we'll only approve a project if it gets to X, but I think it's quite a good method to use one or several of those as just an analysis tool to look at both, you know, what is the score resulting from a certain project, and also, when you look at that score, you start to see aspects that perhaps can be improved on a project, and then go back and fine-tune the project. So they might be tools that you might want to look at as planning here in Capitola progresses. It might even be something that we could do as part of the zoning code if you wanted to direct us to do that.
Thank you. Can I get Green Score? Can I get that online somewhere?
You can find a generalized description of it on our website at placeworks.com.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again, David. This time, I think I'll open it up to the public, see if there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on the general plan. And/or the EIR.
My name is Ed Newman, and I served as the chair of the General Plan Advisory Commission for two and a half years. I have a few observations based on that experience for you. First, just to remind you that the General Plan Advisory Commission was a diverse citizen-based committee. It consisted of 11 members. There was some change during the two and a half years, but not much. It was pretty consistent. The committee met 19 times. We also had several workshops. Our role, as we saw it, was basically to provide input and ideas, not to make decisions. And then that helped the staff put together a proposal for the planning commission to vet, and then for the city council to make a final decision on. So it was a process that I think I've discussed before you in the past, and one that was very enjoyable for me, and I think I commend all the members of the General Plan Advisory Commission for their service and for the input that they gave. The second subject I thought I would address or was asked to address is the FAR. The second subject I thought I would address or was asked to address is the FAR, floor area ratio issue. So in eight years on the Planning Commission, the concept of floor area ratio came up frequently, always in the context of single-family residences on individual lots. And it was a very important, and those of you who made decisions about the ordinances in the past know about this, that the amount of building on an individual lot in a neighborhood greatly affects the development of that neighborhood, so this is a very important number. But that's not in the general plan. Apparently, that's not required to be in the general plan, and that will still be part of your zoning ordinance. What we did have, do have in the general plan is floor area ratio requirements for commercial and mixed-use development, which never came up, as far as I am aware, during the eight years I was a planning commissioner. So this was something new to me, and I have formed some opinions based on my, these are my personal opinions formed as a result of discussions that took place in the General Plan Advisory Committee. And basically, we were told that state law requires some sort of density control for commercial and mixed-use, and so this is the density control of choice. But when you get beyond that, as far as I'm concerned, it's a very crude method of regulating commercial and mixed-use development, and you can, if you start to get into it and see where parking is located and what's inside the, inside the interior of the building and so forth, and do different examples, you'll see that it's just a poor way to control the design of commercial development. So since we had to have it, at least my, and I think other members of the General Plan Advisory Committee's thought was, let's just make it big enough so it doesn't eliminate any developments, and then the Planning Commission and the City Council can regulate developments through design criteria and the other ways that we do, through height, through setbacks, through all the other tools that we have as planners. So that's basically, and so I fully support the proposed increase in the one area, and I support actually increases everywhere, because I think it should just be a high enough number that it's irrelevant, pretty much. And the hotel is probably as good an example as any. We spent a lot of time talking about the concept of a development of a hotel in the village, and everything that came out from that will lead you to the conclusion that the floor area ratio number that we're talking about here isn't going to be the determining factor in the design of that, that development, if it ever happens. Okay, enough on that. The third observation and final one I want to make, which I haven't heard from anyone yet, and maybe you've already talked about this, but the City of Capitola spent a lot of money on this general plan development, and I think a great job was done by the consultants and by everyone involved. It's going to happen again in 20 years or 25 years. I think it would be nice to have some kind of post-mortem analysis of what went right, what went wrong, so you can put that in the file, and when they start the next one, they can pull it out and have at least some ideas about the things that we did, that we wouldn't do again, and the things that we didn't do that we probably should have done. Thank you.
It'll be buried, for sure.
A time capsule, a time capsule.
That's a, that's a great idea, Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Ed.
Hi, my name is Mary Gorley. I'm a Development Project Manager with Berry Swenson Builder, and I'd like to speak to the FAR issue as well, particularly for the hotel site. I think there's already been comments, basically to the effect that I was going to speak to partially, in that there's going to be ample time to review the design and make sure it's carefully articulated with the village. What we're really most concerned with at this point is that we have adequate provisions for which to go forward with a proposal, and I've looked at this a little bit more carefully since the Planning Commission hearing with what the FAR impacts could mean to the hotel. And basically, even though we don't have an application, we have studied the site considerably, and there's one level which is going to be utilized for the commercial frontage, let's say, or another appropriate frontage, for back-of-house services. We're looking to build, and we have the market to build, a higher-end hotel. If you build a higher-end hotel, it's going to require a higher level of service. And I think most importantly with our program, we have a meeting center, and we feel like that's a critical component for our project, for the financial feasibility, because it's going to help to make sure that people come here year-round and not just during the summer season. And so the meeting center is a part and programmatic element that the increase or the allowance for the FAR will accommodate, and this will give us comfort level that, you know, that we would be able to go forward with some concept plans that are designed with consideration of all the comments and the efforts that have been made so far with the G-PAC and the workshops, and otherwise, as we've heard from the community. So, but at this point, you know, it's step one, and we'd like to know that we have the ability to provide a higher-end, you know, boutique-type hotel that can achieve a higher level of service with, you know, rooms and courtyards and with the, with the meeting center. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
How many, how many people are you thinking about having to accommodate for a meeting room or a conference that would want to have a meeting room?
The one that we're looking at is roughly, it's about 4,000 square feet, and so it could accommodate about, you know, a couple hundred people. It depends on how you set it up and what the event is. But we're looking for something basically that, so my husband's in high tech, and they always go to Monterey every single time. It doesn't matter if it's for a small executive session or if it's for a conference, and we're not looking to facilitate a conference at all. But what we are looking to facilitate is to get part of that income over here. It's like, why not go to Capitola, you know, and invite them here? And we think that having a meeting center that, so far as design is being flexible and can accommodate small sessions and larger sessions, it will start to attract some of those types of visitors.
Mary, may I ask you, you know, we're looking at a proposed floor ratio of 2.0 with a possible increase up to 3.0. Is that sufficient?
Part of it might get to be part of the interpretation. I would say that it is at least what we need to, you know, to achieve what we're, what we're thinking of currently.
Okay.
And again, we're going to be carefully considering all of the other factors.
Absolutely, you know, we know, and this is a rather broad generic kind of criteria that we're dealing with here, but Ed, did you have?
That was my exact question. And I take it, I take it that that was a yes.
I would say that if we could get 3.5, it would be better, but we will, we will, you know, three, that's not on the table currently, but I think that we can achieve the hotel. Part of it is the interpretation, I think, of FAR, but we will be able to get a meeting center in place and work within it, you know. It does get to the, I don't want to get into the setbacks and the courtyards and all that type of thing, you know. We hope to have suites, of course, in the hotel with, that would have large private courtyards for some of the suites, and so we feel like that's some amenity, you know, with views to downtown and the ocean. So that's why we're looking for, for the increase.
Mike?
I just want to make sure the takeaway message is very, very accurate, and that if we adopt this EIR the way it is right now, it's not at least three, it's three, period. You need to digest that, because I'm seeing a chart here. There's, there's the Planning Commission and staff, and everyone is going along with 3.0. That is the ultimate, something that we cannot go above by our own, as I understand it, by our own action. We are setting an absolute maximum that we cannot, you know, rule over, correct?
Councilman Terrence, that's correct. I mean, the council would always have the authority, should they choose, to amend the general plan. They could do that with a development application. But going back to Councilman Norton's comment earlier, I think a lot of it comes down to how you calculate floor area ratio. The way the code's written now, I mean, to me, it seems a little odd. We count some things that, I'm not sure they should be counted, and we'll have that discussion as we update the zoning ordinance, but I think if those are fine-tuned, it would certainly help a lot of these projects that have usable areas that currently count towards floor area ratio but don't necessarily contribute to a building's mass or scale.
Sure, totally understand that.
Yes, Stephanie?
After we, after we deal with this tonight, are, do you have a timeline for this, or are you really going to be working on this? People ask us all the time, you know, what's happening, and, you know, it'd be nice to have an answer for them, if there is any answer.
Absolutely. Admittedly, we were awaiting what was happening with the water situation in the village, you know, in terms of the vote toward a moratorium or not. Happily, there is not something, there's a, there's a way forward, you know, there's a way that we can go ahead and start collecting and getting water for the project. And so with that, we will be proceeding with plans and continuing to work with, you know, our architects in the city to advance them. But we did want to make sure that, you know, I mean, developing a hotel takes an enormous time, amount of time, money, and energy, and political will, and we want to make sure that when we go forward, we have that in place, and we didn't want to do it, you know, we didn't want to be proceeding rapidly forward if there was the potential for the district to go into a moratorium. But with that, and with the flexibility, you know, to have adequate space and, you know, to build a hotel, then, you know, we feel confident that we would, we would move forward with the project.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
Can we just one more follow-up? I'm not sure I have a clear.
Sure, if that's okay with Mary.
Yeah, Mary. Following up on what Councilman Terrence said, I'm trying to understand, because as I look at the project, I'm looking at how we interpret the FAR, and when you hint at 3.5, I'm trying to get an understanding if you actually have drawings now of something you are looking at that would necessitate that much variance, okay, or that increase, or if it's because of the interpretation of the zoning ordinance and the limitations on that, if that's what's causing it. So I'm kind of confused.
Basically, what's happened is that when we ran the FAR on the concept plans that we have currently, they were a little bit different than the way that the city, the way that it could be for the FARs by the city. So if we looked at the concept plans with the interpretation of FAR, including all the courtyards and storage and everything else, we, we needed 3.5.
Okay, this, okay, that's, that's answered my question.
I mean, I think that we can, I think that we could work with that, but that's basically what we have. I think it was, the architect had run them in a standard way, and there was...
It was a question, and you gave me the answer. That's it. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Ron Graves. I'm presently a planning commissioner, but I'm also a resident of, I was happily informed the other day, almost 50 years here in Capitola. I do not want to talk to the hotel in the village. My main purpose for coming up here tonight was, I saw you on television, and I knew you were discussing floor area ratio, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of thought about what happened at the Planning Commission. We unanimously, as the staff told you, sent you both the EIR and the general plan. However, the vote on the FAR was a three-to-two split. I was in the minority, along with Mr. Ruth, and our reasoning was quite well espounded on. I don't intend to convince you tonight, but Mayor asked a question earlier. We had a .5 ratio out on 41st Avenue, and we built the Fairfield Inn, and we built Great Western, or whatever it is, and they, those certainly exceeded that. I can tell you how the five came about. On the property that was known as Begonia Plaza, with by-term on the council and in the city, there was a proposal for a seven-story building. The amount of people that showed up in the council chambers, which are a little bit smaller than this today, we ended up having to take it out in the parking lot because the fire marshal would not let us meet inside with that number of people. Obviously, we don't have a seven-story building out there now, but with a 2.0 floor area ratio in those areas on 41st Avenue, you could build that. And why the five-seven came along was that proposal. And all I'm saying to you is be very careful on how high you go. I actually believe, like Dennis and the staff, that we're going to be able to control development more with the zoning ordinance than we're ever going to do with a general plan. And that's when "It's Not in My Backyard" really hits you hard, because we all remember how many people showed up for the development on the salvage yard on 38th Avenue, and that has a floor area ratio that's way above, again, the .5 that was in the area. However, the comment I would make, that was a planned development. So when you go to the zoning ordinance, planned developments has guidelines that are somewhat different than the general plan. It's very specific, and you give up certain things and get certain amenities under that type of development. I hope you guys go forward. I look forward to seeing the zoning ordinance. I stand by my conviction that I think that the FAR in the 41st Avenue area, whether it be west or east or south of Capitola Road, is too high. I think it, it's, could, it won't, but it could make a corridor of very large buildings that would certainly deteriorate the quality of life as we know it in Capitola today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
My name's Jacques Pertrin, the Villan Monterey, and I just want to say it was a pleasure serving on the G-PAC Committee. I learned a lot. I came originally because I was worried about, and very concerned about, the issue of the character of this community and what would be in the G-PAC that addressed that in particular. And there's a lot, actually. Initially, I wanted a separate section on that, and, you know, I changed my view a little bit. I think that without the specificity, there's interpretation, there's some room to move. Now, the Policy LU that was just, LU 1.1 that was just quoted earlier, "to ensure the new development maintains and enhances Capitola's neighborly feel, coastal village's charm, and welcoming character." The main thing that the protection of the, of the character this village depends on is the involvement of the people who live here. Doesn't matter what's written here, the people that care enough about this community and come here to express their opinion, and I can't express that even as much, it's really very important, and that's what maintains this community, and that's why I got on this board. But I saw it tonight as an example, and I've been at these meetings multiple times, and I see it repeatedly. In a way, I'm not too worried, but it's the kind of thing that you have to always emphasize. And there's one other thing here. For those who want to be on the City Council, if you look at Policy 1.6, "create a balanced community, ensure that land use decisions balance the needs, interests, and concerns of Capitola residents, visitors, and workers." So in a way, it's like making the decision that Solomon had to make. To be in this position, you have to keep in account the various interests of the people of this city, the people who own property and the people who live and visit here. The people who live here and the people who are the stakeholders have to be expressing that view so that you have what we feel and what is important to us to be a part of that decision that you're going to make. The other reason why I'm here is because I'd like to recognize people that helped make this successful. I think we all remember Derek, he set the tone. Susan Westman, you know, she wasn't paid full-time, but it sounded like to me she worked full-time to help get this going. We've got to remember her. And then Rich, you've carried the ball to the goal. We're waiting for a cross-kick from the City Council to get in. Thank you.
I don't know what that means. It's going to be a header. Is that a, is that a song?
I'm Linda Smith. I'm also a planning commissioner, and I came tonight because you guys requested that the planning commissioners come and share our thoughts with you on the FAR and the plan. And the one thing I really wanted to say is that, that Planning Commission unanimously and wholeheartedly sent both the EIR and the plan to you. And we did that with commendation to staff and to our consultant and to the G-PAC team for doing an excellent job of bringing in the public and getting input... for doing an excellent job of bringing in the public and getting input from all the citizens on the general plan. It's thorough. Nobody's in here telling you not to do it, which I think is really impressive. And so our hats were off to them, and I want to make sure that you guys understand, that's a wholehearted unanimous feeling from the planning commission. The FAR is, it's a controversial one. The numbers that came forward were numbers that we could agree on, yes, with a split vote. And the 1.5 got a whole lot of debate, so it's not surprising that the staff is coming forward with a request to hire that number because that's what we have on the streets. And I think Mr. Newman articulated it very well. The FAR shouldn't stop anything, it shouldn't stop a good design from coming forward. And as it was explained to us, you can't violate, whatever maximum we put in the general plan, you can't violate that. Even if you get the right design for the right project on the right location, if it violates that, it can't be done. So hopefully, you'll set that number high enough that it won't stop good developments from coming to Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Rich, couldn't you ask for a variance?
No. There's no variance.
No, there's no variances to the general plan. That's even under planned development. Correct. The only way to change it would be through a general plan amendment. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else from the public like to address the council on the general plan? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone, bring it back up to council for further discussion and potential action. Before we get into the deliberations, I did want to ask a question about the EIR. And actually, since one of the speakers had referred to the potential water moratorium, one of the environmental impacts references, you know, certainly the additional use of water, the impacts on the groundwater supplies because, as a result of increased water demand, this is on page 419 in the agenda packet. This is under hydrology and water quality. And it referenced that there's no mitigation measure available to mitigate this impact to a less than significant level. Since we're, I mean, since this topic was about groundwater, and we don't really control groundwater, but the Water District is in effect taking measures and I imagine will continue to take measures to mitigate the impacts. You know, there's water credits that have, that they require offsets, so on and so forth. Couldn't those mitigation measures have been recognized in the EIR even though they're not necessarily under our auspices?
Mayor Story, yeah, I think the EIR does refer to the water demand offset requirement of the Water District, and I think on a project-by-project basis, those work pretty effectively. However, if you look at it cumulatively, you know, there's really no assurance that the Water District's going to maintain those policies and that there won't be some depletion of the groundwater over a 20- to 30-year timeframe. And so for sequel purposes, we did take a bit of a conservative approach to say that there's not necessarily a guarantee, so therefore, there could be a significant unmitigated impact.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I wanted to ask the council, I was thinking maybe of maybe splitting this up into two votes, one concerning the FAR just in itself, because I imagine, as the planning commission did, we might have some varying opinions on that. And then we'll separate that from the overall general plan, and then we'll go to that for passage. How's that sound to everyone? Or, yeah, Mike?
In that regard, I would like to move the FAR with the increase to 2.0 for the community commercial that was recommended by staff. And the only reason I'm doing that is realizing the constriction that we would have as a city and having to do a, you know, a general plan amendment. We don't want to give that to any council. I think the core of this is in the zoning ordinance. And I was really surprised to hear that, you know, something like a courtyard would be counted for the FARs is almost as crazy as counting basements. So I'm hoping that we get some real rational thought behind the zoning ordinance when it happens, because I've looked at a lot of concepts for the hotel, and I can't imagine any of them, you know, coming close to three with the articulation and the courtyards and the open spaces. So again, the chart as approved by the planning commission with the one addition of going from 1.5 to two in the community commercial, and that's my motion.
Sarah Second.
Friendly amendment.
Let's see if we have a second.
I'll second with a friendly amendment.
Okay, we have a second, and...
On the village mixed use, increase of FAR allowance for the theater property of 3.0.
It is 3.0 in the chart.
Proposed FAR states 2.0.
Yeah, but the increased FAR allowance is 3.0, which...
So are you, are you going with everything in the right-hand column with the exception?
Well, no, it's a, the proposed FAR is the base FAR, but we can at any time go up to three.
With criteria.
With criteria, and I don't think that's hard to prove at all with any substantial project, especially the Village Hotel.
Okay, and then the village stays at 2.0?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second for the discussion.
I was going to have a friendly amendment, I also have to throw in. I have concerns about the proposed hotel drawing, and I was going to suggest to 3.5 because the point being made here is I don't want to handcuff the project. Either project, no matter where it is, is going to have to come back through design review, through the planning commission and us. And I'm not sure how the zoning ordinance is going to fall out. I hear a request in this project, and my amendment is 3.5.
I think you're going to get a lot of, you get opposition from that. One of the issues we've always, we've always dealt with is density, and we can't really go on what is there and say, "Well, it's there, so let's do more of that." Because, you know, some of it was an accident, some of it was planned, some of it wasn't, some of it looks good, some of it doesn't look good. So I think we'd be really careful about that, but, you know, the big issue with that theater down there is the stairway and the neighbors on both sides, above and below. And so one of the things that we promised them was that, you know, whatever we do, we're going to do something that'll be compatible with the neighborhood, and I don't think three is going to do it.
Well, the only reason I've stuck with three is that, you know, if we're counting courtyards getting us over three, that's ludicrous. And if it were two stories and there's a courtyard on the second floor with a pool or a sun deck or whatever, why that should be considered part of the FAR?
That's the way it is under our pressing ordinance.
It has to change the zoning.
We have height limits. I mean, there is, we can't exceed the bluff.
Yeah.
Those restrictions are there.
That's one at a time.
Well, I know, and, you know, we certainly will look at all those things, but the, you know, I don't think, we don't want to change our zoning for a developer, to make it fit for a developer. We want to do what's best for the community for 50 years out, and, you know, I think we really have to be careful with congestion. That's what people have said, you know, too much traffic, not enough parking, too many cars. You know, of course, we're looking at that in the summertime now with our height. But, I mean, who would like to have a successful hotel or a successful venture down there? But I don't think, I think we have to be really careful about it.
Well, you know, Peter Hubbuck told us that we've been arguing about congestion and cars for the last 80 years, so, you know, it's an ongoing struggle. But even the residential applicants that come to us that want to put a basement in are saddled with the fact that we count the basement area in the FAR, which is ludicrous because it adds nothing to the mass of the home. If anything, it allows all the junk you accumulate in the garage to be down in the basement so that you can actually park a car in the garage, which is a rarity in Capitola. So I feel pretty, pretty good about the 3.0. And I, when I think about it covering every square inch of the property three stories up, if you were, if it were really 3.0, that's a pretty maximum mass. And if we get rid of things like, you know, if a center courtyard is being called part of the building masses, we have to get rational with our zoning, too.
I think, I think we could deal with a lot of these issues that the zoning, in fact, we have to, because you could not reach 3.0 when you have a height limit of 27 feet in the village.
Right.
There's no way to reach it. You can't possibly do that. So you, as we're proving now, it's still impossible to build a building there, that's anywhere near that size. So we're restricted by this. So the zoning ordinance itself is going to be where the design is taking place on this.
This is currently in conflict with our present zoning ordinance, everything we're doing tonight.
Yes.
So this is just a precursor to tuning up the zoning ordinance to make it rational.
Okay, Ed?
Question for Rich. Rich, this may not be a fair question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do you feel that the current zoning ordinance could stifle the difference between a 3.5 and a 3.0? And is it possible that if certain modifications are made to the courtyards and other accessory features, that a building that may be proposed would fit into that designation?
I think it's impossible to say with certainty without reviewing plans and doing the calculations, but I think fine-tuning the zoning ordinance would certainly provide a lot more flexibility and probably make it more feasible for that hotel to develop at their desired intensity.
I mean, we count balconies now. That was a fair answer, thank you. I know it was a tough question.
And, you know, and two and a half might be fine if we change some of those other things and not count certain areas. I don't see, I don't, that site is so small, how are you going to have big courtyards there? How are you going to have a swimming pool there?
Well, you can.
It's so small, but...
What we're saying, Stephanie, is if you build, let's say you build a single story, and you put the swimming pool on the roof of the single story, that open courtyard above the one story is now counted as a second story. That's, and there's no building there, and yet it's part of the calculation. So that's something we have to grapple with and get rational with our zoning.
Absolutely, but I want to go back to, you know, this map that we have, that's the floor area ratio information, that the point that was brought up before, that was really good point, the property on Capitola Road at 45th, 46th, 47th, huge piece of property. I don't know how many owners are there, but there's lots of little buildings, huge parking lot, little amphitheater. They've never done anything in that amphitheater. I don't remember what they ever planned, whether they ever planned any concerts or how, you know, I don't remember, maybe Ron can help us. But, but as was brought up at, you know, one of our meetings, that's a huge piece of property, and if someone wanted to develop that and they wanted to cover it with, you know, lot coverage, we have to be really careful that, that they're not going to have, to be able to build something that's too massive, that, that we would, we would have to approve it. I mean, the height, certainly, we wouldn't have to, but, I mean, we wouldn't have to allow something larger than, like, higher than our height limit. But we don't want to, we don't want to cover that much of that piece of property right there, I don't think, in the middle of really a neighborhood, some businesses, but really neighborhood.
Any other comments? I guess I would like to weigh in on the floor ratio and that. I'm looking at the matrix that was passed by the planning commission and going from where we were in the previous plan to 0.5. We're already in most of the areas, more than doubling that, sometimes three times that number in the proposed floor ratio, and then allowing for increased FAR allowance. And I think the major distinction from the motion is that under community commercial, which really what that means is it backs up against neighborhoods and the potentially increasing that to 2.0. My experience on this council is that there's always a tendency to overbuild, and you'd get these trade-offs through, I mean, and through the zoning process of a nice, a developer will want to come in and provide a nice project, but with a lot of variances. That's how the Fairfield Hotels got built. And, and if you don't concede, and that's where planned developments come into play, if you don't concede to that, they'll just build something ugly, an ugly box, and it all fits in with the zoning. So there's always pressure to overbuild. To me, the planning commission had already, had gone through and grappled this. I think these, I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable with it, but I'm willing to accept the planning commission's outcomes on this, and even though, I mean, that was even on a split vote. But I would prefer to see it under community commercial, left at 1.5 instead of increased to two. And particularly because the rationale of increasing it to two is to make it fair to be like what the Best Western and Fairfield Hotels are. But those were already significant exceptions to the previous floor ratio, and apparently also possibly a potential oversight. So I don't think having an increased number to match, you know, a mistake that we did in the past is a valid justification. So with that, I'm going to vote no on the motion. I'd prefer just to keep the matrix as the planning commission had passed it. Any other comments?
Yes. I don't consider the Fairfield or the Best Western a mistake. I feel that we did stretch things, granted, but I think that after they've been there a couple of years as they have been, they are not whole, they are not projects, there are some projects, admittedly, in the years that I've been involved, both in the planning commission, the city council, that I drive past and I literally cringe because the entire meeting gets flashed before my eyes. Those aren't two of them. Those are two of the better considerations because we gave latitude for good design, and that means everything. There are projects that we've done in this city that meet all the criteria, and they're just wretched because they don't look good. It's all about the design, and that's the only reason I went along with it, with the 2.0, just as a clarification.
And also, you know, stepping it back, the design makes all the difference in the world. That building in Laguna was beautiful. It was huge, but it was really pretty. They know the design was nice, and they stepped, they stepped it back nicely. You know, they got, they have the best typical landscape architects, big tree over here and giant tree over there, you know, in the pictures, yeah. They all do that, they all do that. But, I mean, those were nice buildings. Thank you, that was nice to see them.
Mr. Mayor, before you call the question, on staff's behalf, I just wanted to clarify, if I could, the motion. The motion, as I understood it, was to incorporate the suggestions made by staff, but then the maker only mentioned one of the two specifically that had been suggested by staff. So I want to clarify, does the motion include the drawing that's up on the wall as well, which is to extend that onto the east side of 41st Avenue? Or is the motion to accept the planning commission changes with only the change to go from 1.5 to 2.0?
Only to change 1.5 to 2.0. I am a little tender on the east side of 41st.
I just wanted to clarify.
The proposal is to follow that yellow line?
The draft plan right now would only allow the increased floor ratio allowance on the west side of 41st?
Which is the Best Western Fairfield side.
Correct. And staff's recommendation was that you also allow that provision on the east side in recognition of the expansive parking lots that a building could front right on the street along 41st without negatively impacting residences.
The problem I have with the east side is the residences are significantly closer, and there's less of a buffer. And we saw that with the drive-through requests from McDonald's. We forget sometimes that people live right on the other side of the fence to that large shopping center. And that's on the side that we're proposing, that this other change is proposing, and I'm a little reluctant on that one.
I'm, Mike, if we're going that way, I'm going to withdraw my second on this, because I have, I have an issue with the amount of design work and what you can do to make those businesses on the east side of 41st Avenue successful. I can see, I can understand the 100-foot setback, but when you start putting a lower FAR on those, on those projects down there, you are forever going to have an animal clinic, and you're going to have a dollar store, and that's all, you're dooming and a mattress company. That's what you're dooming to that property, too. Unless we, unless we give some operational expansion limits to that, to that property along there, we can bring the property all the way to the front, and so putting restrictions on that property as low, as low as this, it dooms it forever. I mean, that's, you're going to have, the projects you have in there now are never going to change, because those, the people who owns the property will not do anything to improve their property if they can't get a reasonable development in there. But I can understand the 100-foot setback. Maybe that's a reasonable, a reasonable request, but...
Because right now, you could put a second story on the dollar store, and it would meet these requirements.
Uh huh. They can do two stories.
You realize that?
So Dennis, did you withdraw on your second?
I am.
To the motion? Okay.
Yeah, unless that area is included in it.
Is there, is there another second to the motion?
Well, you know, that ought to be a whole separate discussion, maybe. I mean, that is...
I'd like to offer some discussion on that before we, before I give a second.
I mean, because what I'm saying is, if we're going to do that, we ought to notice to the residents, have them come here, tell them we're considering changing the zoning, what do they think about it, and so forth.
We're not considering changing the zoning tonight, but, so, so Steph, you...
I'll second the motion, and I have a comment.
Okay.
The comment I want to make is, you know, I'd rather deal with the, with Dennis's concern about, on a case-by-case basis. I don't, what I'm trying not to do here is tie our hands with anything we pass. I have great confidence in the planning commission to scrutinize every project, and then it also has to come before this board, whoever it may be. I think when we're, when we're talking about putting in stone something that can't be amended, we want to make sure... that it has latitude, okay? And I don't think that, you know, we're going to approve a project that's going to be, if it happens to back up to the residential in a space where it's going to affect a lot of neighbors, I think this council, when the project came through for the drive-through McDonald's, it shut it down. It was going to drastically affect the one neighbor, and the prudent decision was made not to do that project. But I don't want to tie our hands with saying, just carte blanche, certain situations aren't going to exist, because there may be some. I mean, I want to have faith in the developer and the project to bring us a good project. I think that's where I'm at with this. It's just, I just want a good project. But I see the value of the 2.0. I would like you to have your amended to include both sides, but...
I have a question about both sides, and correct me if I'm wrong. I was under the impression that if we allow 2.0 on both sides, that this is not, in the general plan, we would not be able to address the setback. The setback would merely be a promise of a future zoning ordinance. Are you saying that we can include, we can codify a 100-foot setback on the backside of the property on the east side of 41st?
You can.
As part of the general plan?
Yeah, as part of that policy, you could add criteria, whether it be a 100-foot setback or greater.
Then I apologize. You know, like I said, I thought that the 100-foot was something that we would consider later on, and it made me cringe because I was afraid to lose it. So, I could easily go along with the 2.0 on both sides, if that 100-foot setback is part of the general plan.
The council could certainly add that as a criteria for allowing that additional floor ratio.
That is my motion.
Okay. You get my second back.
Okay, my apologies. No, I got a second ready. I don't need you anymore. No. My apologies.
Yeah, you do.
I misunderstood, I misunderstood what our abilities were.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just help out, just for the record, what I think the motion is now, so we all know. So, I believe the motion is to accept the Planning Commission recommendation on the FAR with two changes. The first is to take the area south of 41st and raise it with conditions, in the conditional column, from 1.5 to 2.0. And the second is to apply that also on the east side of 41st, provided that one of the conditions is that it can be no closer than 100 feet from the adjacent residential properties.
That's correct.
For purposes on discussion of the motion, Rich, the rationale for the 100-foot buffer on the east side as opposed to the west side, again, why is that?
When we were deliberating with the G-PAC, there was substantial concern about having increased floor ratio on the east side because of the residential uses that are a little bit more prominent on that side of the street. There are some on the west side as well, but it's not as, I guess, dense of a residential area.
Most of them are separated by a city street, like Claire's smaller parking, you know. There's more distance.
But there, I mean, there are some residents on, yeah, the west side.
Yeah, particularly south of Capitola Road.
Right.
At the G-PAC level, was the 100-foot setback in discussion at the time?
It wasn't. We looked at that before we went to the Planning Commission, and we looked at it closer, and just realizing the expanse of some of those parking lots, that really you could build a project which was pedestrian-oriented right towards the street, have increased height or floor ratio, and be designed in such a manner that it didn't negatively impact those adjacent residential areas. So, it did come out after the G-PAC process.
Okay, any further discussion among council members?
No, I'd be happy to go back and try to look at the, try to remember the discussion about the FAR, about why we got that, why we got to where we are, because it seems to me that we were, maybe we were getting really large buildings, and so we decided to count more so that that would then decrease the overall mass. I'm not sure what it was at that time. Well, but I think, I think Mr. Newman's point is really, really well taken, that that's what we should do, is do a review of this after we finish it, and I think what Dennis and I were saying for years, you know, it should be done every 10 years. That, you know, if we had done this every 10 years, we wouldn't be in this pickle where we have so many things changing and so many things to deal with. If you do it, and little by little, and you keep up with it, you don't have to spend all this money. You spend $10,000, and you go and you tweak it, and you, you know, change the pictures, and you, you know, you go through it, and you tweak it, and you revise it a little bit. But, you know, I would really remind everybody that in 10 years, that we should be talking about this and doing it then when it'll be easier and cheaper, and fresher in our minds about why we did something, or why we didn't something, or what a previous council did something or didn't do something, and nobody remembers. So, you know, I think that's, you know, in the past, you know, we always thought, oh, $100,000 did you have in your plan. Well, my God, that was cheap. Now, it's, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. And so, you certainly don't want to spend that kind of money and do that very often. But I think what Bruce Arthur was talking about before and others, you know, we could have done it for a lot less, and done it more in-house, and review it more often. But, I mean, I'd really thank all the G-PAC members. I was a labor of love to do all of that. That was a huge job, huge job that they did. I thank all of you for doing, for participating in this, and...
Thank you, Stephanie. Can we have a roll call vote, please, on the motion? Everybody understand the motion before?
The motion is returned to the board, is that...
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Harland?
No.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bothar?
Yes.
Councilmember Termini?
Yes.
Mayor Story?
No. Guess we kind of mirrored the Planning Commission. So, thanks, everyone. Very, I think, comprehensive and robust discussion about floor ratios. I'm sure we'll be picking this up again when we get to the zoning ordinance. But now, let's go over the overall general plan, and I was thinking that maybe if, maybe if we just wanted to go down, I'm sure that everybody's going to have some particular comments on sections. How about if we, Stephanie, you want to start us out, and...
Just a couple. I think that they did a really, really good job. On the DCU section, on DCU, well, I'll go back and find that. OCS 12. And 15, we should take those pictures out of there because the Coral Community Garden doesn't exist anymore unless you want to leave in there to remember what we should have, what we don't have, what we really miss. Landscaping and vegetation, I was hoping we could have something stronger about landscaping, and something about, just some very strong language, perhaps prohibiting new lawns, and this is the time to talk about it. By the way, what's our timeline for this? If we don't decide on everything tonight, if we do decide we want to come back and tweak a couple of things, can we do that? Can we come back again, or do that? We want to change the language, the gray water language, or the landscaping language, or some other things that people are interested in?
If you adopt it this evening, the opportunity to make changes to the document is over. If you'd like to continue the discussion, you can obviously continue the discussion and continue to make changes.
Okay. Anyway, there's some language there, and I have a couple others, but I'll wait to hear from other people.
Okay. Dennis, you...
I just have a couple of questions and corrections in here. I'm a little confused by the sphere of influence chart, but maybe that's something that's been with us for a while. Is that...
It is. Yeah, it's been there for a while. It's established through the LAFCO process.
Okay. And so, it really, it takes in, it looks like clear back to about, I don't know, 32nd Avenue, that everything west of that, all of Pleasure Point. Okay. So, is that still a doctrine with the city that we would like to annex that area? Is that something we, or is it just, we inherited it and we keep it? What is...
No, the sphere of influence doesn't necessarily indicate that the city intends to annex it. Certainly, if the future council is desired to, they could explore those opportunities, so...
Okay. There's a couple pictures in here that aren't our city, and I'll give you the pages, unless they're somewhere I've never been, which is possible.
It's not likely. No, can't be. It's not likely.
LU 35, maybe somebody can explain to me where that is.
Let's see.
Yeah.
Oh, that's...
35 and 36.
Is that Hot Feet?
No, that's not Hot Feet. That's not...
You're correct. That picture's not from Capitola. I think it was just used more for illustrative purposes to get the point across and the narrative.
Maybe it's some got torn down already or something.
Yeah, no.
And then LU 36, also, I think that there's one there of a outside public area.
You brought this up before, didn't you? Yeah.
LU 36, I think, has a picture that certainly can be replaced with a picture of one of our outside areas.
Well, our council members agree that we should all focus on Capitola?
Yes.
They should be photos of Capitola, generally speaking, yes, since it's Capitola general plan.
Okay. I'm glad we have consensus on that. MO 7, there's discussion of Capitola Village Parking, but it's taken from parking studies that were done in 2008. It doesn't mention the new parking garage, and it also shows a deficiency of, in here, of 100, let's see if I can see it, deficiency of 176 spaces in the village. I think we cured that.
Yes.
It'd be good if we updated this, because we are, this is a 20-year document, and so if we can update that section there to...
Absolutely.
It's realistic. Other than that, it's a great document. I'm really, I'm pretty happy with it.
Thank you, Dennis. Mike, you want to...
I'm good.
Okay. Ed?
I just have one comment. I'm okay with the document. Unfortunately, I wanted to express my deep appreciation for the hard work Ed Newman did running the G-PAC Committee. He unfortunately got up and left after the FAR. I think he had enough. But for the record, Ed Newman worked very hard to organize a large group of people and brought this document here to us, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the hard work he did and his input.
He did, yeah.
And otherwise, I'm fine with the document.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ed. And also concerning acknowledgements, I was thinking that we should recognize Susan Westman under city staff. I know she, I think she was on contract, but, you know, she put a tremendous amount of effort in getting this kicked off, and so we should mention her as well. I did also, just on the question of the pictorials, on page LU 25, there's a very nice picture. I'm pleased with it. But that very same picture is repeated on MO 17, and just like, maybe an opportunity to highlight more of Capitola instead of using the same picture?
Sure.
If other council members agree with me.
Absolutely.
No duplication.
And also, I think you should, if you could do like a word search for Pacific Cove, because I know we made an effort, because we changed the name to Beach and Village Parking, number one and number two, but there's still references to Pacific Cove in here in several locations. And if you, let me just check my other... And that's it. Otherwise, you know, I'm actually very pleased to be arriving at this point. I've been on the council for eight years now, and on the first year I started, we were talking about the general plan. And I know a lot of other council members even prior to that, and so I think this is a significant milestone that we have finally reached. I think it's a very professionally done, legally comprehensive, but at the same time accessible and readable general plan. I would encourage everyone, there is an excellent narrative in here about the history of Capitola written by Carolyn Swift, so I would encourage everyone to go on the website, or if you can get a copy, just so you can become more familiar with the community that you live in and its history. So, with that, I think let's have a...
I'll move for approval, 2014 Capitola General Plan?
Thank you, Dennis.
With the, with changes as noted.
Sarah Sack, yes, Dana.
For the record, your motion either beforehand or included in this motion, you do need to first certify the EIR and the other things about the findings of overriding consideration in the mitigation monitoring program. I don't know if your city attorney has an opinion as to whether that should be within the same motion or a separate motion, but it definitely needs to come first.
Yeah.
Same motion?
It's the same motion.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Did you get all that, Sue? Okay. So, there's a motion and a second to certify the EIR and to adopt the general plan with some of the amendments here discussed. I think I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bothar?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Sam, I have a question of David and Ben in a second. We should get our...
Yeah.
Rich, is the Coastal Commission going to pass this?
It's an interesting question. We gave the Coastal Commission a preview of the draft before it was released to the public. They provided comments. They didn't see any major inconsistencies or problems. We put it out for public review and included them as part of that review, didn't receive any comments. I did get a letter yesterday at 5:00 reminding us that any inconsistencies would be, need to be reconciled with the Coastal Commission. I've asked them if they found any problems, and they haven't had a response, so it remains to be seen. But from my point of view, and I've talked to the city attorney, the general plan is not part of our LCP, and we are not required to have them, bless it. But with that said, we couldn't have inconsistent policies that conflicted with the LCP. So, there is that piece, but I don't think we have any.
What do you think, Dave?
I agree. I think that you do, you will be updating the LCP as well, but we don't see any issues that should be of major import here.
And during the year, if we want to change the zoning on a piece of property, then we would have the opportunity to do that, and you can do three a year.
Four, on the general plan.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, not that we want to turn around and do that, but we have not taken a look at this for zoning in a long, long, long time. And there's a couple of parcels that we can talk about another time, that maybe should be, neighborhood commercial maybe should be commercial, maybe they're commercial, maybe they should be neighborhood commercial, maybe they're commercial and they should be residential. There's only a few around town, but this is our opportunity to clean it up this year. We can take it, kind of look at it, look around and see, you know, we had this fun, now that we're going to redo the street on 38th, finally, we can take a look at that crazy neighborhood, see if there's some way we can make that feel more a part of Capitola, and, you know, some things like that. We almost ought to have, you know, one meeting a year where we talk about general plan stuff, and how are we following it, and what can we do, and, you know, so forth, just to refresh our memories about this, because we don't know.
So, thank you, David. Thanks for guiding us through this process, getting us here.
You're very welcome. And I do want to recognize Ben Noble, who's done the lion's share of the work for us.
Thank you, Ben, too.
Good job, Ben.
And also, there was, I wanted to be sure that, you know, Ed had made a recommendation that we do kind of a postmortem of this process, include it with the record. Assuming the council agrees on that as direction to staff to...
Well, I think, you know, the G-PAC should do one, the Planning Commission could do one, we could do one, the public, you know, could, you know, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to look at this, and it's not just one. I mean, we might come to have one report to compile it all, but, yeah.
Well, just having direction to staff, maybe it's setting up, making a recommendation of what kind of evaluative process we could do at this point.
Do that.
Okay. And so, with that, thank you, everyone. Now, we're going to move on to the next item, which is to consider a resolution to levy of the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessment for fiscal year 2014, 2015. With that, I am also going to disclose that as an owner of a professional office in the village, I have a conflict, and so I am going to recuse myself on this item, and I will now turn it over to Vice Mayor Norton, and I will leave the room.
Do you have to pay the fee?
I do.
So, we will be dealing with 10B, which is Consider Resolution of Levy to the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessment Staff Report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Norton, council members. This is a public hearing to consider the levy of the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessments for fiscal year 14, 15. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Santa Cruz Sentinel as well as sent to the affected business owners. Absent of any written... Absent of any written or oral protest from the property owners casting a majority vote, council will be asked to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2014-2015 BIA assessments and plan. We also have a member of the BIA present.
Gary Carr, would you like to speak, please?
We do everything together now with this.
Oh, yes.
So it seems.
In the consideration of the length of the previous public hearing, we're here to answer your questions.
How's everything going?
Great.
Good. Okay, good. All right, got it.
Comments? Any questions?
I have one, Carr. Would it be possible to engage in some dialogue between the businesses and the city as to the sidewalk cleaning? And I realize the city is responsible for the majority that aren't in front of the businesses, but I think that some cooperation, a long-term solution to the street cleaning, we already were seeing deterioration of the new sidewalks that are in front of the restaurants. So, Gary?
I'll take that point, because we've had ongoing conversations about this. And I think the merchants, as well as anybody else, feel very concerned about the filth in the sidewalks in some places. And over the years, there's been some efforts to try and clean that by the city, which we support, obviously. It's a very costly thing to do, by the way. And I think that we adopt a methodology of trying to clean all sidewalks relative to whether they're dirty or not. And so we're trying to refine that more, working with the city and so on to do that. I can tell you that, in my personal opinion, it's a responsibility of the merchants, lease landlords, and they should be notified if their sidewalk is not cleaned. I can tell you that I have offered my steam cleaner and my maintenance person to steam clean where we can. And by the way, we're limited, because only in front of my restaurant is a sewer that goes out to the sewage itself. All the others go out to the ocean. And obviously, then there's a real problem with trying to clean sidewalk into the ocean, and we don't want to do that. And so we have a little bit of luxury that others don't have. I can tell you, though, in the last week, my sidewalk has always been steam cleaned, once a month, at least. But starting with the Fog Bank, down to the other side of Peaceville Heart, that was steam cleaned last week. And I'm not sure who did it. And those first people contacted me, before I could get back to them and say I'd help them, they went and did it themselves. And so I've asked my maintenance person to contact me and offer our services again. So I don't know if there's a real specific recommendation we can make, but I can tell you that we can work hard with Jamie and trying to figure out a way that we can do that. And we always come down to, well, it's sheer costs. Well, we have a 60-some-odd thousand dollar budget, and so I think it's $1,000 to clean the sidewalks. That's a big chunk that we can't use for marketing and so on. But we are more than helpful in trying, applying pressure where we can, pressure, don't mean steam cleaning pressure, other pressure to get people to try and maintain their sidewalks. But I agree with the idea, we should work closely to make it work.
Jamie? From the city side?
From the city side. Well, we did recently reach out to the owner of the property that Gary referred to, and pointed out some of the cleanup issues. And he did indicate he was gonna start taking care of it. So it's good to know that they are. Hopefully, there's a newfound desire by the property owner there to take care of the sidewalk. You know, the city, I think, we've offered to the BIA, and I think we'll continue to offer to the BIA, that we'd like to be partners in increasing the maintenance. I know that we've had ongoing conversations, and I hope that we're able to reach an agreement. We do have also procured a new pressure washer to do spot cleanings, because I do think that this notion of cleaning the entire village, probably the entire village, doesn't need more cleanings all the time, and we could focus our efforts a little bit better. But it's certainly a priority, really a priority for all of us.
Mr. Vice Mayor? You know, it's obvious that the area that we really need to pay attention to is Restaurant Row, if you could call it that. And that is from Zelda's Deck to Margaritaville. I cannot fathom how that stretch costs $1,000 to clean. Is that what we're talking about, costing $1,000, just that?
No, I think the efforts we've done, and correct me if I'm wrong, have been the entire village sidewalks. And that's Jamie's point, that we should...
Not that the whole village doesn't need it occasionally, but I think the thing that needs constant cleaning is that 300-foot stretch.
And I agree. I say we do ours once a month, maybe every six weeks, and...
Great cycle.
And so we need to get all the people on the same page to do that. And we've got to start. But the thing we're handicapped with is really the requirement that the vacuum takes the dirty water up, in major parts of it. And so maybe if we can work with the people, the city employees, to do just that, just focus on that one stretch. I should point out, by the way, city already thinking, I don't know when, it could've been 100 years ago, but sometime, the city allowed Zelda's to put their garbage dump right out front on that street, okay? And so that is like a no-brainer. You're gonna get dirt and filth in that. I can definitely assure you. So all I'm saying is, the city ought to be mindful of the actions they take